Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 12th meeting 2021 of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne School District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that anything that you broadcast on your screen may be captured by the recording. We're going to begin our meeting tonight with community comments. I'm gonna keep an eye on the clock and probably let that run for about 15 minutes before I move us on. It's not an effort to stop any community members from sharing. It's just a matter of making sure that we have the time to get through our agenda this evening. So I just ask, community comments are an opportunity for members of this community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. For community comments, please just virtually raise your hand in the Zoom and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and your relationship to the school district or whether you live in Dover Sherburne or Boston. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of our community. It's not a forum for answering questions or for engaging in the debate. And once the public comments section of this meeting has been concluded, we will now then move on to other business. And at that time, unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. So this is our standard operating procedure in all three school districts. Thank you. And do I have any members of the community who would like to make a comment at this time?
Sorry, I thought I could do this so much faster. Hi, I'm Anita Lotti. I teach at the high school. And this comment is in reference to the pool testing initiative that was being proposed by the state. So I just wanted to let you guys know that so far, the hybrid model has been going amazing at the high school. Like, the students have adapted, the teachers have adapted. I think it's been going, it's far exceeded our expectations. And now we're at the point where I think everybody's in this great rhythm and we don't want to shut down because the students have been doing so well. We've been getting through the curriculum. And so we're trying, like, all we want to do is stay open, right? And just be able to do our job. With this outbreak that's been sort of looming across the state and then this potential variant that's coming through that has a much higher transmission rate. I think as teachers, we've been discussing sort of having this anxiety of if this outbreaks, are we going to have to shut down again? And my daughter went to UNH and they did this pool testing there and they were able to keep their numbers really, really low. And they were able to attend in-person classes throughout the semester. So having that opportunity to bring that into our school may potentially help us stay open longer and then just keep us kind of in this great flow. So I just really wanted to go on record and just saying that I really support this and I think it might be a good way for us to sort of just keep track of our numbers and be able to squash these little clusters as they come up. But that was just sort of where I was at, what I wanted to comment on.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lotti. Appreciate it. Do I have a hand up from Laura McGovern? Did I have that? Okay, nope. Do I have any other community comments at this time? Elizabeth Friedman?
Hi, thank you so much. I am a teacher at Dover Sherburne High School as well in the science department with Anita Lotti. And I also wanted to offer my support for the pool testing initiative. I have friends that work in the Wellesley School District, primarily at the middle school, and they get tested every Monday. And I spoke with them extensively about their experience and they have found it to be really helpful for not only catching cases quickly, but also for their peace of mind and helping to relieve and lower anxiety, which has in turn really had a positive impact on their quality of life during this very difficult time, which I think is important to keep in mind for the mental health of our students, but also our staff and teachers in addition. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Appreciate it. Do I have any other members of the community who want to make a comment at this time? Okay. So that being said, we'll close this portion of our meeting, community comments. Thank you to all of you. And we always appreciate hearing from our community, from our parents, and also from our faculty. Before we go on to the next item, I did just want to say on behalf of the Regional School Committee, just to pause for a moment to acknowledge that this is the first time we're meeting in the new year 2021. And although many of us had been deeply hopeful that, you know, 2020 would be the end of sort of our time of woe and looking forward to hopefully vaccines and, you know, an end to the pandemic. You know, January 6th was a very difficult day for our whole country. And I know particularly for our school communities and for our students and for our faculty who went back to school on Thursday, really not having seen, well, you know, to some extent, to various extents, having seen or not seen the events coming, certainly the visions that folks saw on TV of folks breaching the Capitol and a riotous mob and all the really scary things make it really hard to be a teacher and to be a student. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our faculty and our leadership for supporting them to support students, for being able to express their feelings and have conversations about that that help kids put it in context. As some folks may know, I'm a middle school educator. And in my school, we realized that our sixth graders were six years old when there was the last time there was a change of power in America. They have no memory of that. They have no understanding of how it's supposed to go. And what we all saw as being so shocking, they don't even have context to understand that it's so shocking. And so I wanted to say thank you to teachers for putting their emotions in a box so that they could serve our students and to our families and our students for sending them to us to care for because that's the job of schools is to educate kids and help give them context when scary things happen and things are uncertain and we don't know where the future's going to go. So, thank you. And also, while we're talking about our teachers, I just want to please take this moment to give a shout out to our community, specifically a plea. You know, vacation happened and despite all of our leaders' warnings to not go anywhere or see anyone, people did that. And, you know, I get it, I have a family. And many of our families maintain second homes in other locations. And I do know and am aware that weekend trips to places are becoming commonplace for some families despite the fact that the state is very clear and the school system's very clear that if you leave the state and you come back, your child needs a COVID test before they can come back to school. So I'm just using this opportunity to beg our families, really. Keeping kids in school alive, we all agree, is really important. We'd like more of it. We can't do that if it's not a community compact trust. So it's really hard for our faculty if on a Wednesday afternoon, a student comes for extra help into a Zoom and the background's a palm tree. And in the morning, they're sitting in class. That's really hard. So we've got to beg folks to please take care of one another and take care of us as a community by making the sacrifice to not be doing those things and expecting us to be putting ourselves in possibly harm's way to educate your kids. You know, I've got to say it. So thank you so much to all of you who have been, just a lot of people, giving up their routines, giving up weekend ski trips, you know, making the once in a while things with COVID tests on either end or, you know, however you're doing it. But it's a really big deal to us. That's all.
Maggie, if I could just briefly echo your thanks to the teachers and building leaders for creating the space and having the dialogues around last week's events. And I was really pleased to hear that that wasn't going on just within classes, but also outside of classrooms, in the hallways or in the cafeteria where Mr. Smith and other teachers were actively engaging with students at the high school around the issue, which was really appreciated by the students and by parents. So, thank you very much.
Thanks. Are there any other members that wanted to make a comment before we move forward? Right. So I know I speak for all of us when we say a big thank you. That's hard work. It's necessary work. It's hard work. All right. Our next item on our agenda is the warrant reports. Each of you members have received a list of the warrants issued this month. Do you have any questions about them? Okay, moving on. The next item on our agenda is the financial report and it's just the FY '21 monthly report. Dawn?
Yes, so you have your statements as of December 31st. And this is at the end of a quarter. You also have your special revenue and revolving funds. If you recall, I'm going to keep your commentary running so that we don't lose information I've shared from meeting to meeting. There's really very little new information in your reports this year, I mean, this month. I tried to highlight what was new and on the financials, really, there's not anything new that I've reported. February will be when we actually give you some better projections or some projections on utilities. So that's an open item on your encumbrances. Any questions on the monthly, just the revenue of, or statement of revenue or expenditures?
Michael?
Yeah, thank you. Quick question, Dawn. The CARES grant, note your statement that this is extended to 2021, December 31. And there's a little bit residual left in that, although I also remember you talking about funds that flow through the towns. Is there money available that's sitting with the towns or will there be more money that has already been appropriated, you know, at Congress that will be coming available, you know, aside from what may come in further stimulus funds?
Right, right. Okay, so I was gonna, I was gonna talk about the reopening grant. But yes, so there, you know, on December 27th is when we found out the extension of the grants. It also applies to the municipal cares. So the municipal monies that we've been talking about, prior to that, they had already put a call out to municipal towns and cities to do a reconciliation. So they were allowing them to go back and see if there was anything else they had to pull in. So I was going to work with the towns on that. So there is some funding available both that was already in existence and there's new funding coming down the road. We don't know exactly how all the new funding is going to work. It's still funneling its way through and it won't be, it won't be as large as what we've seen, but it will be some additional funding that we can utilize for this school year and beyond because they have now extended, I think, the use of most of these funds until December of next year, of this year, actually. So we're still trying to figure all the new funding that has come out. We really haven't seen the details enough to know exactly what our amounts are going to be. So as that comes into play, we'll keep all three school committees updated on that.
Thank you.
But it has given us, the extension has given us a little more flexibility, definitely with spending. Just jumping back up on, I wanted to highlight on the special revenue and revolving funds, I did say you have your quarterly report. The one revolving or special revenue fund, I wanted to just add a few details to is cafeteria. So if you look on your statement, you'll see a negative balance right now. If you recall, you know, we did fully pay all of our cafeteria staff during the closure. So we had about four months, three and a half months of salaries with no income coming in. And as you see at the beginning of every year anyway, we have a lot of startup costs and that happened in the beginning of the food service year that we will continue to sort of recoup a little bit of that money. And we slowly will build the balance back. I feel that looking at the great things that Janelle has put into place, she's made, she's taken up every opportunity there is to supply meals to our students that we probably will get back into the black. So I don't think we'll end the year negatively, but I just didn't want you to get too concerned about that. Obviously, we used to be sitting on, we ended right before, actually, I've given you statements on February 29th, 2020, right before everything sort of broke loose and we had a fund balance of about $136,000. You ended the year with $86,000 and now we're negative 40, but we'll make up some of that. One of the largest payments that we made and we highlighted in the notes for you is they do fund their retirement. So $50,000 was paid in July for the retirement and that happens every year. And we see a little dip, but then we'll hopefully build back up with what revenue will be coming in. But remember, we're only seeing half the students on a normal basis. So we will never, we won't be able to get to where we were, but I'm hoping that we can at least break even.
Thank you. And thank you to Janelle for all of her work creatively feeding people, which obviously we want, but also keeping the numbers.
Exactly. And then just the last thing is that we still are on, I think, scheduled to have your audited statements presented in February. I'm going to guess that it's going to be that second meeting in February, but that dovetail nicely with, you know, looking at the fiscal year '22 budget.
When you, a question I have in terms of the monthly and the related to the CARES Act, you know, I saw also the press release from the governor and the presentation he made to the state on Friday about surveillance testing. It looks like they would pick up the cost for the first six weeks and then it would be on districts to pick it up with their CARES money. Is that realistic that the CARES grant would pay for that? Like, what did other districts do? How did that go? Do you know anything?
Well, I think we're still in the research or investigation stage of what the cost is going to be. We just had the first webinar today. So I think it's too early to know exactly what our costs will be subsequent to the six weeks if we go into this program. But I think that they have, you know, there's a little pockets of money everywhere that they've given us, I think, throughout this pandemic. So my guess is that we, if it's something we want to do, we'd be able to pull together funding from a couple of different grants they've given us and the existing CARES that we still have. Like I'm saying, we have some flexibility with, maybe there were some things that we were going to put into CARES because we needed to get it expended by 1231 that we might have a little more flexibility with if there's a more pressing expense that we need to cover.
And is there, is there, like, is the offer have an expiration date? Like, do we have to decide? Like, you guys have a lot of sort of deciding to do in terms of, is it practical and how to do it and so forth? But is there a date by which you are either in or you're out?
Nope, because once it goes on the state contract, anyone can get in. So there, it is not, you're not closing any kind of doors by not jumping onto the early, they're calling it, they're not even calling it a pile. I think they're calling it an early rollout. But eventually, it will be on the state contract that anyone can go purchase the test, the testing platform from that off the state contract.
To get the six, to get the six weeks of free from the state, do you have to do the early?
Yes, because once that six weeks runs out, then the six weeks is over.
Okay. Okay. Is it possible we do that or we would not want to move that fast?
I think it's too early to, to make any kind of decision on that. Like I said, we just had the first webinar today. And I think Andrew's, I think over the next week, we might learn more and I think all three school committees are meeting next week and so we might have more to share at that point. But literally, everyone was getting the information fresh today as to how it was all going to play out. And I'll be honest, they're still working out some of those pieces. So they're moving it along, but they're also working at the same time.
Right, right. People have a day job too, right? Yes, I understand.
True. I mean, just the, just the plan, just to figure out how it's going to work. They're still figuring it out.
There's, there's a lot to it and a lot of factors to consider. And we still need to process a little bit more of what we learned today. I'm interested in hearing what area superintendents are doing in response. It raises a host of questions that I think typically most people aren't necessarily going to think about. And I think that's why superintendents are really still processing it. And it actually works in our favor because it's the kind of thing we'd want to discuss with all three committees and we have a joint meeting next week. So that's probably the best place for us to kind of bring people up to speed on what we're thinking in terms of the testing and whether or not it's best for the system.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on the monthlies? Okay. Capital Plan, Dawn?
Capital Plan. So we're proud or happy to present to you the fiscal year '22 capital plan along with the four preceding years. So you'll have the '22 through '26. I'm pleased tonight to have Paul join us because he has sort of been the partner with me in developing not only the '22, but we've done a lot of work looking out at the future years. As you know, we've got some larger projects. And so I think what we'll do is I'm going to have him walk through the projects for fiscal year '22, just give you a little bit of background on those so that you understand what we're actually requesting you approve for next year. And then also tell you what we've done to date on some of the outer years and how we have sort of changed the plan a little bit since probably the last one you saw last year. So I will turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Dawn. Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all again. Let me take you into the wonderful world of maintenance and all of our projects that we're proposing here. I just want to make an overall statement that many of these projects, five out of six, actually, of the '22 projects are very green. And I'm not sure if everyone realizes, realizes that. I'm not savvy enough with the community to know how green you people want to be, but a lot of these projects are green and I can explain them as we go through. And I'll start with the first one is the domestic hot water heaters. The hot water heaters that are in place now at the middle school and the high school are entering year 19 and their predicted useful life is 20. We know how that goes. Anything you buy with a warranty of 12 years and 12 years and a month, it goes. So the plan, this is, this is a planned maintenance. There's two types of maintenance, there's planned maintenance and there's reactive maintenance. Planned maintenance is what we're doing here. We're going to propose to change those water heaters. They haven't failed. But if they do fail during the school year, we look at possibilities of closing school for the day or two that we have to replace them. It's actually 20% more in the construction field to do reactive maintenance. So if we did it in the middle of the season, we're going to pay an uptick in contractors' fees. And then there's downtime, you know, if we only have hot water for one or two days, that we could be in some trouble there. So the PVI is the brand name of the water heaters that are there. And they were very popular 20 years ago. And in the facilities world, they're very unpopular right now. So our proposal would be to change, it's kind of like an oil burner in your house, probably around the same size burner, but a big tank of water that that burner's heating up. But we would propose to go to a different system, a condensing boiler system, which is 90 to 95% efficient. And I'm not sure if Mass Energy still has rebates. It's something that Dawn and I can look into, but a few years back, they were offering rebates for efficiency that's that high when you're replacing mechanical equipment in the building. But we would certainly look into that. So we would remove, the PVI, just for an example, the PVIs, I just can't say enough bad things about them. I did a job, I was working in Uxbridge a few years back in 2018. Their new high school was built in 2012 and in 2018, I had to replace their PVI hot water heater. It just, the burner just burnt the whole from one side to the other in there. They're not a very effective means of hot water, but that's enough on hot water, I guess. But that's the project for the two middle school and the high school, two in each one. Floors and hallways, there's been a program, I guess, that Dawn and Ralph had put in place of replacing sections of the existing vinyl composite tile, the VCT. And that's the tile that gets stripped and waxed every year and then replacing it with the no wax tile. They say it's maintenance-free. That's a good sales point. You still have to like seal it once a year. But flooring is also green. When we use stripper on the traditional floors, it's very caustic. It's, it's, it's very, it'll, it's like using a bleach. It'll burn the clothes of the custodians. It's not a good product to be inhaling when they strip in the summer. And then we have to buy stripper and wax. With the floors that we're proposing to put in, there are no wax floor. So we might put some sealer on them once a year, but we're not stripping, we're not waxing and we're saving a ton of time in custodial work, not to mention removing all of those chemicals from the building that, that aren't as healthy as they should be. So flooring, there's going to be hallways at the middle school, continuation from previous projects and then some classrooms that we found that as the, as the guys are going into the summer and stripping and waxing, a lot of the VCT is crumbling and breaking. So we've picked a lot of the classrooms that have failed floors to replace again with this no wax floor. So those are the two flooring projects. And then stairwells and landings, replacing what's there with a rubber, a rubber product. Again, it's no wax. So there's no stripping and no putting any other chemicals on it. It's just a mop and go and it's a better grip. So it's a better safety stair. It's typically the ones with the rubber dimples that you see on them, that they got like a, maybe a two-inch dimple typically, and it's a better tread. There's a better grip and it's safer, especially in the winter months when people are coming in with ice and snow in their boots. And then asphalt paving is just, it's a, it's a patch of paving that we're going to do between the middle school and going towards Langquist to finish off between other areas that were paved in the past. So there's a section where, I don't know if you remember the dumpster that was there up till last week, but it's in that area between the gym building and the, and the middle school building. So that area there would be replaced with new asphalt. And then duct insulation, we've noticed that in Langquist on the roof, in that building, they ran the ductwork exterior. It runs out on the roof. It was just the way they did it for, typically in auditorium spaces and cafeteria spaces. So you didn't hear the air moving through the interior of the building. But in doing that, you're running, you're trying to heat air in a metal duct on the outside when it's 20 degrees in February. So that has to be insulated. That insulation has failed. It's absorbing water now, some of it's blown down. So it's in failure. That's not preventive maintenance. This one's going to be reactive maintenance. We've already got some pricing ahead of time so that we know what we're dealing with there. But it's, and you'll notice, you won't notice because you're not going to go on the roof, I'm hoping. But I've been on the roof and it takes up two levels and the upper level of the ductwork is just falling down. The lower level is protected by the, by the raised wall in the auditorium. So it's not in as poor shape as the upper level, but the upper level has failed to the point where it's falling down onto the roof. So that project, it should be, we should pay attention to that real soon, as soon as, as soon as we can. So those are the six projects for '22. Does anyone have any questions in '22? And I can move on to '23 after.
Let me, let me just say a word or two on '22. So these are the best estimates that we have to date. As we progress through up until March, we may tweak some of these numbers. I'm actually Um, I'm actually, Paul and I are meeting our floor rep here tomorrow just to walk through our projects and make sure the quotes we're carrying are, um, adequate uh, for the projects. And then the other thing about fiscal year twenty-two that, um, the committee and the town, uh, finance committees will need to decide is funding. Uh, as you know, for the last two years, the region has funded the capital, um, without asking for direct, um, new contributions from the towns. We did place a placeholder on both, um, town warrants, uh, warrants for the articles for the IMA, uh, so that we have a more open discussion this year on how they'd like to see us proceed. I do think that we probably would be in a position to fund capital again. But we will have a discussion with that, um, I think with the two towns before we decide. But you're looking at a, a request right now of four hundred and twenty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-two.
And I have a more, more of a procedural question. Do you, do you, um, put together the capital needs of, um, each or all the, the districts together? And perhaps move things, um, to the right or to the left in order to try to smooth things out a bit more? Or is that something that you just kind of put out? This is really what we're, we're asking for, what's necessary. And then if the, the towns have any concerns about the lumpiness of it, they'll give some feedback around pushing it one way or the other?
So we do attend capital meetings with both, um, towns. And a lot, there are years where they'll say, well, how flexible, we're looking to do this because they have added all their capital plans together. Do you have any flexibility with moving this or doing that? So it's like, I think the first pass, we always do, this is what we, this is how we'd like to see it. And then there's always like a little dance about, you know, can we move this, do this? Um, I will say that, you know, initially, as of last year, we thought our first big roofing project was going to be on fiscal year twenty-two. While the towns were anxious to know if that was going to still play out because I think at least Dover's got some larger capital projects and they were trying to figure it out. So they were very happy that, um, on our own, we decided we needed to move it out to twenty-three. Because they have some big things in twenty-two and they were trying to do more of a spread. Uh, but it is, it is, we definitely work collaboratively, um, with the two towns to make sure that we're meeting their needs, both from their buildings, um, and then their, their, um, funding needs.
Thank you.
Um, uh, you know, I, not a question as much as a comment. I wanted to say thank you to, well, to Dawn and also to Mr. Anastasi. Um, Paul, th- thank you. You explained home re- school repair in a way I understand. And I will go look up about those water heaters because I love to understand water heaters and why we should. I just, I loved the whole thing. I want to know all about all the things. I can't wait until we get to why we're going to buy a certain floor scrubber. Like, we, we care about these things. And the fact that you clearly care about them as much as, as we do, um, and wanting to get value for us is, is huge for me.
I welcome you into our world anytime. Just don't ask me to teach a class.
Okay, I'll go on the roof.
I can't come, I can't come to your world.
Okay, insulation is very important. I get that. Wet insulation, bad.
Bad, terrible.
Bad. All right. Um, are there, any other questions about the FY twenty-two projects? Okay. Did you want to tell us about the coming attractions?
Sure, um, the, there's only four projects, um, proposed in twenty-three. And I paused there so that you can read the figures on twenty-three. Um, that's why there's only four. There, there's some big ticket items there. Mainly the roof, mainly, mainly the roofing. Roofs are expensive. And, um, we're in the process of, we, we had an infrared study done, um, last week. Where they'll, they come around with the, just as I said, it's an infrared scan and it will show the wet insulation underneath anywhere where water has penetrated to the insulation and heat is trying to get out. So that's the reason for the, um, the infrared scan that we just completed. Um, I got a verbal uh, report from the company that did the, um, the infrared. And we're, we're, we were trying to decide whether we wanted to do full roof replacement or restore the roof. There's, there's products now that we can put on top of that roof to restore it, um, and still get a twenty-year life out of it, that twenty-year lifespan. Um, for half the price of replacing. So the company told me that at twenty-five percent failure, a twenty-five percent wet roof in the infrared scan is where you would, that's your tipping point, that if it's twenty-five or more, then you should replace. So the verbal report told me that the high school was at five to ten percent wet. And Lanquist was at ten to fifteen and the middle school was on top with fifteen to twenty. So we're still in the range that we can go restorative for half the price. And the reason we're pushing for the restorative is you, you, you get a twenty-year warranty. And for twice the price at a new roof, you're only going to get a thirty-year warranty. So the warranties don't double because you're paying double. Um, and then the other side of that, going back to the green thing, um, when you take off all of the insulation and when you replace the roof, you strip it right down to the bare bones and you take off the insulation. And I calculated, there's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of insulation on those three roofs. And at four inches of insulation is the average, we would fill a hundred forty-yard dumpsters to go to landfill. The forty-yard dumpsters are the big metal containers that roll off the back of the truck. Not the small ones that we have at the school that they pick up with the front-end loader. It's the ones that slide off the truck. So think about a hundred of those dumpsters full of old insulation going into a landfill.
So that's. Not to mention rubber, Paul.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's a hazard.
Breakdown.
It's got asphalt, it's got rubber in it, it, it's got all kinds of stone that's, that's mixed with it and the adhesives. So it, it's, it's a bad thing to put in the lean, in the, in the landfill. Someday it will have to go there. But right now, um, the, the scan's telling us that we don't. So that's why we'd push for the, for the restoring. And then we would, you can see, uh, just because we're on roofs and I'm not planning on going to two thousand twenty-four. But we, we would push the high school out to twenty-four because the roofs, you want to do your roofs in a summer break. Um, and there's not enough contractors that would give us a fair price that have the staff to be able to do all three roofs in a nine-week shutdown for the summer. So we could do two comfortably and then push the high school out, um, to twenty-four. So that's why all three aren't being done at the same time. It just wouldn't be cost-effective to bid it that way. Uh, in Massachusetts, there might be one or two um, contractors that could do it and, and they know, they know they can do it. So we, we don't, we don't want to, um, we don't want to push that, that envelope. Um, and then the pump house boiler, again, that's a twenty-year-old boiler. It, it's, it's on, it's on its nineteenth year. It'll, it'll be on its nineteenth year then. We're, we're, you know, getting right to the end of it. Um, the last thing we need is to, the pump house going down because there's no heat in the pump room and that also heats the water in the tank in the winter so that it doesn't freeze. Um, so we need to keep water flowing and, uh, that, that's getting to the end of, end of its life. So.
Paul, am I correct? That's for the pump house for our septic system, like our
Yes.
implant. So no pump house, if it freezes, that's like our sewage system is frozen and we can't.
Everything stops.
Disaster.
Everything stops. Okay. And so I, I, I skipped over the high school boilers there and I went to the pump house. I read boilers. Um, I just need a bigger spreadsheet next time. Uh, but, but the high school boilers, uh, they were, that, they were done in, installed in two thousand two. And then two of them were installed in two thousand two and then one was in two thousand seven. So they're, they're coming to, you know, the two of them are pushing the end of their life. And they're old style boilers. They, they vent out through the chimney. Um, the new condensing boilers, uh, it, it, for, for those that don't know how the condensing boiler works, it just puts out a little moist air. Um, if you notice any new homes that are being built, if they don't have a fireplace, they don't have a chimney anymore. Because the boilers just vent out on a little piece of plastic pipe out the side of the house. And that's what these boilers would do. It would be a much bigger pipe than a house. But there's no more emissions going up through our chimneys and, and out into the world. And again, they're ninety to ninety-five percent efficient rating and the energy, uh, and the energy stats. So any of these boilers between the hot, domestic hot water, pump house boiler, high school boilers, will all be condensing boilers as we change over into the new world. They'll run less and that, you, you'd be surprised if, if you've seen the boilers now. We could replace them with something the size of a refrigerator, household refrigerator, each boiler. So they're, they're a third the size. Um, and they, they're ninety-five percent efficient. So that's our twenty-three. Anyone got any questions about those big numbers?
Actually, Paul, can I ask you a question about the, the boilers? Because one of the, one of the concerns at the high school especially is space. Um, at any given, given period, all of the classrooms are fully utilized, which is a real challenge for us. And so, um, if in fact we switched over to these condensers, does, is, is there any chance at all of making better use of the space where they are now? Or could we consider that as we play, make these plans?
Yeah, going forward, um, in order to get space back into the education side of the walls, I could see maybe separating the boilers, um, with a block wall and moving custodial storage into that space. And that would free up the space that's out in the corridors um, that the custodians are using for storage. Um, they could be converted with some HVAC into offices and and, and things like that. There, there's all kinds of creative ways to use the space. I wouldn't put staff and students in the, next to the boiler room like that. But we could, I, I can see playing checkers there and moving, moving things into the boiler room for storage and then using the spaces that were out in the building that were being used for custodial storage.
There's other, there's other equipment in the boiler room too. I mean, um, it's almost like a, a little mechanical world.
Right.
Right. But I think what I, what Paul was saying makes sense that if you were to suddenly take out something that takes up about sixty percent of the space and you could move other things into that space so you could fully utilize it. You might be able to free up other space elsewhere, even office space is desperately needed in the high school.
Yep, that's always a possibility. We just need to be creative and stay within the building rules.
Codes, yeah.
The codes.
So I want to add that, um, with working with the consultants that, um, have actually taken us down the path of having the infrared scans. And actually, um, in the last week are actually here on site doing some repairs to our, um, existing for us to give us that little extra protection we need until we do the major project to help a couple of areas where we're having leaks. They were able to give us actually estimates for, um, a, a restoration versus a replacement. So the numbers that you see in your, um, five-year plan now are actually estimates for the projects versus a placeholder that we had for onsite insight. Um, and as you, as you notice, there, we're not seeing any large changes, which, um, was fortunate for us that we were a candidate for the restoration because that's sort of the price range that, um, we were carrying as placeholders. But I wanted to make, give you just that little piece of comfort that those numbers are actually, uh, somewhat credible numbers now versus just something we're pulling from, from a report. Similar to what we did with, um, the roofs, we're looking to do similar work with the boilers though, to, to have someone come in and give us, you know, take a look at what we have, give us some ideas of what we can do. And with that, then we'll be able to firm those numbers up and have a potentially a better, uh, plan as to what years makes sense to do what. Right now, because, uh, we did split them, um, into two different years. We figured if we're going to do big projects for the middle school and Lanquist on the roof, we'll do the boilers in the high school. Uh, but that's just Paul and I talking. So, um, again, when we bring that, um, whoever does that consulting work in for us will be able to refine, I think, that, uh, um, plan for the boilers. Uh, because as you know, we, we pull things from onsite insight in the years that, um, they say we should be looking at them. And as we get closer to that year, that's when we dig deeper and we figure out what we really need to do. Um, and where we can sort of, uh, uh, make it a little tighter of a plan. So if you went back and looked at your plan from last year, you're going to probably see one or two projects that we've done some more digging into and realize we really didn't need to do them. So those have come off the plan. But the beauty of onsite insight, as you know, is it makes you think about it, it makes you talk about it, um, and it makes you like at least, um, investigate what needs to be done. So I think that's the beauty of that. But we've refined it as we move along.
Thank you. Um, I have, uh, both Anne and Michael have questions. So Anne, we'll start with you.
Thank you. And thank you so much, Paul. And I really appreciate your emphasis on being green. I think that's really, really important and I appreciate that. Um, I have a question that when we were initially looking at the roof and thinking it was a total redo, a replacement, we were also talking about looking into solar and is that now off the table? Or is that still in discussion?
No.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm, you, there's many ways to do solar. Some of it on the roof, some of it, you know, it's on, on the field and ground level. But if the, once the roof was done and had a twenty-year warranty, that's typically the warranty you're going to get for your solar panels is twenty years as well.
But Paul, I, I don't mind, um, you know, putting you on the spot because I think you're the expert in the room on this. I, I've been hot on solar, uh, for a long time.
I get it. I get it. I see what you're doing.
But I know you have said though, Paul, to Dawn, and she shared this with me, that you're not as crazy about solar on the roof as you are as solar on the ground. Is that true?
That's true.
Yeah, like over parking lots or something?
Yeah, I, I, I've seen, I've seen it done with, um, carports over teachers' parking lots. Um, you get solar, you get the look of solar at the ground level, if that's what you want to see, and the teachers love it. They, they, they park undercover and there's no snow in the car when they come out or, or rain when they're getting in and out. Um, and you have, you def- this, this is the, one of the first communities I worked in that's had enough space to, to put it at ground level. Where your, your acreage, um, you could put it at the edges of the fields. There, there's so much that you could do with it. My personal opinion with it on the roof is I've seen after snowstorms when we send, uh, maintenance people on the roof to, because right after the snowstorm, that's when the HVAC stops working and we have to send someone up there. Um, I've, they can't find it and they can't find the solar panels and they walk across them and break them because they're under the snow. They're always charged. Um, so even if the breaker panel down below or if there's an emergency and you pull that, that switch on the side of the building, there's still electricity in those panels. So, um, I have two firefighters in my family. And they, they don't, they don't believe in solar on the roof because if there's a problem, the first place the firefighters go is to the roof to vent the building. Um, and, and if they're putting an ax in a panel that's still hot, um, they're, they're not happy about that. That's my personal opinion on, on solar. I, if I had, you know, fifteen to twenty acres here in Watertown, I'd put solar out in the back of my yard, but I, I wouldn't personally wouldn't put it on my roof. But that's not, it's, it's done all the time. So don't.
Well, I, I, I would, uh, kind of spending my, my last career in, in solar, um, and doing solar power plants as well as roofs, I, I would wholeheartedly agree with your assessment. Um, the, the other issue comes when you do have repairs. Um, my, my guess is the roof warranties are, are, are materials only and not labor. Um, but if you have a roof that fails, um, and you have to repair that because of load issues, oftentimes you have to offload your entire array down to the ground and then reinstall it. Um, it's, it is, there's a lot more potential, both safety liability and cost liability than benefit. And like you said, you know, we have the opportunity for either a ground mount or, uh, or a carport mount where there, there's lots of space to, to look into potential, uh, solutions.
Right. And if we look back at, um, two thousand fifteen, I was working in the city of Newton at the time and the, that's when we had those major snows. So that, that we didn't have a lot of solar at that, that point. But the mayor gave the order to shovel the roofs, get the snow, get the snow loads off the roof. I'm not sure if you did it in Dover, but we did it in many communities. So with solar on the roof, we not only add the weight of the solar panels, we're putting ballast on them. We're using cinder blocks to ballast them down to the roof. So we're adding weight to the roof. And then we can't get up there and remove the snow if we have to. That, that's, that, in my opinion, that's another downside to having it on the roof. Um, but a lot of people don't like to look at ground level either. So there, there's, there's a debate that's going to go on there and I'll sit back and watch it when it happens.
So, so remember, we've already engaged with Amaresco and they've done a, a site visit and did a, um, So so remember, we've already engaged with AMRESCO and they've done a a site visit and did a um, energy conservation sustainability audit for us. So Paul and I plan to meet with them at the end of January now that we have a better plan for some of our work um, to see how we can incorporate some of their recommendations. And I shared that um, report with Paul. And so I think now with the with the bases, the base knowledge that he's gained and then helping me with this, he will be a great uh, partner in working with AMRESCO and seeing what we can then take these projects that we've identified and we have a better handle on now and incorporate some of their recommendations um, that, you know, are are green, uh, energy efficient, uh, sustainable. So that will be our next um, piece of the project.
If I could just add one more thing, Dawn, uh, because this is something that comes up a lot in the sustainability um, task force. You know, there's a, there's a lot of thirst for solar and um, the the tricky part about solar, and I think that the reason that people put it on the roofs is they you typically don't have to cut trees down uh, for for a school building or something that's elevated, like the region buildings. Whereas uh, if you wanted to put it, for example, at Pine Hill or over Pine Hill's parking lot, where you have all those big tall pine trees, that's a, that's an issue. It's almost not efficient or effective. So the places where you, you know, you could think about it and and it's, you know, obviously, it has to be facing the sun uh, and the trajectory of the sun over the course of the day. And and that's obviously key because if your house doesn't, or your land doesn't face that way, then it's it's not gonna work for you. But uh, but we definitely have sections of our property, I agree with Paul, that wouldn't necessarily require you to take down half of the forest around it. And um, so and even, you know, I mean, we even talked about obviously, not anyone making final decisions, but like even up where the buses are parked. But again, a place that's located uh, right in the middle of the woods. So it's a lot to think about. And I think that's where AMRESCO will be key because that's what they do. They help you to strategize. So I think that's a good plan.
So um, any other questions on um, either the fiscal year twenty-two or the upcoming years or input thoughts? I will say I um, after working with so the because the work, the group that we're working with, I don't even know what you really call them. I've been calling consultant, but I think they're what, building envelope engineers. Um, the Garland, the Garland company is who we've been working with. Um, it's it's just been a a huge weight lifted off my shoulders now that we have a a plan on these larger projects and um, they also will manage it for you and sort of they're sort of a broker and source things out. So I feel like we've got a a good plan. Um, and uh, um, you know, some some margin orders to help us then work with the towns on funding some of these larger projects.
Well, I I I continue to appreciate um, the long-range planning of onsite insight, the getting down to details with with, you know, revisiting projects and, for example, doing the Garland um, work and um, really um, appreciate Paul's insight and sort of giving us a fresh lens on what we need to do with our large projects. Um, and Dawn always like just for keeping on top of it. Um, this looks like a reasonable list for this year and um, you know, gives us enough time to save up our um, plans for our future roof and boiler to come.
Right.
Thank you. Great.
Wait, so I I am I am asking you to approve the fiscal year twenty-two.
Right. So um, at this time, I need to um, invite a motion to approve the um, fiscal year capital plan as outlined in our packet and explained um, tonight by Paul and Dawn. Um, do I have such a motion?
Still moved. Anne Hovey.
Um, do I have a second?
Paul on second.
Great. Motion made by Anne Hovey, seconded by Lynn Collins. Is there any discussion? Okay. If you could take yourself off mute, I'll do a roll call vote. Kate Potter?
Potter, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Thank you so much. Um, the next item on our agenda is a review of the two thousand twenty town report. Um, I um, along with some help from Judy or the authors of the report, while typically this report is a um, not a boilerplate, but it often follows a similar routine, you know, each year, and it's updated with new information and new facts and figures, obviously. This year, we had to do sort of a a large-scale renovation of the report because it made no sense if you did not acknowledge the reality of COVID and the impact that it has had on our school system and on the work that each of us does every day. So um, I'm just before um, we do have to approve it tonight so that it can be sent to the towns for publication in their report. Do I have any discussion about the report or questions?
I don't have any discussion. I just wanted to say good night.
Oh, Paul, yes, Paul. Go, go.
You guys don't need me anymore. Um, anytime you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. And Maggie, if you're ever having a down day, call me. I'll take you up on the roof, show you some insulation.
Up on the roof. Play the song too, up on the roof.
Up on the roof. We'll we'll take care of that. So.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Paul.
Bye.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Back to discussion on town report. Kate?
I just had a minor question slash potential edit.
Yeah.
Um, on the third page under finance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it says parking fees three hundred per permit, but I believe that we're not charging for parking this year. Is that right?
So I was unclear how to exactly handle that because we did charge for parking last year. And then the report is on this, the annual year, not the fiscal year. And I wasn't sure if this was a one-year thing because of COVID or whether it was worth explaining that. I don't know. Dawn, what do you think?
I I was, I think it just stays as is because it is what we do charge. Just an event happened that we didn't happen to, but that's our, that's how we budgeted.
Right. Oh, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And for any interested community members going, why aren't you charging them for parking? Um, the reason is because like if people take the bus, which we have to offer them, then we can't, we need them to not want to take the bus this year so that we can fit so many children on the bus. So we needed to do things to not incentivize people to want to take the bus. So offering parking um, and also because it's safer really for COVID if people are, I mean, it's not better for the environment, but it's like safer for COVID if people are like in their individual car going to school for this year only, not forever.
And they're only going half the time here on campus. So that's awesome. A big piece of it.
There's less back and forth. So it and and so then like, what would you do with the parking fee? Because it's only for half the time. It just made more sense this year to um, take the year off of that. Any other, pardon?
Two fifths the time.
Two fifths the time, right. I know. It's, you know, hopefully, maybe we could get more if we could have surveillance testing and everyone could get vaccinated. And then we would be COVID safe. I mean, that's like that that I see that in the future. But anyway, I digress. Other comments, questions, concerns?
I just want to really quickly say thank you, Maggie and Judy, having written these in the past. I know that it's it's a task. Um, so I think you guys did a really good job. And so thank you.
Anytime.
I just, I just want to clarify. Maggie did the writing and I simply read it and said, geez, Maggie, this is really well-written. Okay.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Okay. So this is also an action required. Um, I need to entertain a motion to approve the draft of the two thousand twenty town reports um, to be forwarded to the towns for inclusion in their town reports. Um, do I have such a motion?
Sure. Anne Hovey, so moved.
Motion made by Anne Hovey. Do I have a second?
Judy Miller, second.
Thank you. Second by Judy Miller. Any discussion? Fantastic. If you could take yourself off mute. Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Anne?
Anne Hovey, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Moving on, item number seven, the consent agenda. We need to um, approve or, you know, make any needed changes to the minutes of the meeting for December eighth and also to approve the receipt of donations that are in your packet. Um, any specific questions on the donations? We had donations this month from Lloyds for a hundred fifty dollars from Needham Bank um, for fifteen hundred dollars, and that's directed to support our MECA program specifically. And we also had another donation directly to support our MECA program from an anonymous Dover family of five hundred dollars. And so I do want to take this opportunity as we do for all generous donations to the school district to thank Lloyds, the bank, and also to our anonymous family supporting our programs. It really makes all the difference um, in the experience of our kids. Um, any further discussion on the minutes or on the donations? Great. Can I take a motion to accept the consent agenda? Do we need to, we need to roll call vote on that as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, can I take a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Kate Potter, so moved.
Great. Motion by Kate Potter, second.
Colin, second.
Seconded by Lynn. If you could take yourself off mute. Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
And Lynn Collins?
And Collins, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Um, item number eight, communication report there. I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Keller are not with us tonight, but I'm certain if folks have any questions or comments that um, uh, Dr. Kio can certainly pass them on to them. Um, I know we do have some teachers on the line, so um, any other um, questions or comments about the headmasters and, sorry, the principals, I think it's the principals now, reflections um, from the high school?
I I would just add Maggie to uh, what Michael said earlier that the principals really had a a big challenge in front of them last week and uh, from by all accounts, did an outstanding job of not running away from this really serious issue and not burying their heads in the sand, but calling it out, saying what it is and allowing for conversation and allowing for teachers to hold those kinds of conversations with the kids, which I believe is absolutely critical. The discussion piece is essential. And uh, so a tip of the hat to to our um, principals from across the system.
Thank you. Uh, Kate?
I I just want to add to what Andrew said that um, as a as a school committee member and a parent with a middle schooler and a high schooler, I was really very impressed with the communication that went home to the parents. Um, just really beautifully written. Um, like Andrew said, didn't put their head in the sand um, and just extremely caring and thoughtful. And I was very grateful for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Yep, Anne?
Thanks, Maggie. Um, I'd also like to say thank you to the teachers and I I'm reading through the reports and finding out the ways that they are finding, they're being so creative and finding really cool ways to continue to make um, education exciting for students, whether they're in person some of the time and, you know, via Zoom sometimes. Um, I think I can't wait also to hear some of the reflections on what they'll take moving forward. Um, because I feel like there's just, it's unbelievable. I'm constantly just amazed by what our teachers do. So thank you. And I can't wait to hear more about it.
Thanks. I I would agree. Anne, it's funny, you know, as as an educator, we're starting to make the list and the list is titled after COVID, what are the things that are actually good ideas that we need to keep doing? And um, I I always I bristle at the idea of silver linings because I do think like, you know, it's a pandemic and mostly things are terrible. But um, but there are definitely some things that have risen in terms of things that we see happening in our schools that um, that are really are really shining lights and that, you know, people do them because they have to. But then it turns out it's a really great thing for kids. There's a lot of that. And I read a lot of that in the report as well. Um, and shout out to Ms. McCoy is here as well, who I know is the brains behind a lot of the curriculum initiatives that are going on and, you know, really pulling together a lot of programs and providing space for people to work together to learn and and resources. And so thank you. Um, because it's evident in these reports that um, all the good things are happening.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Beth. I apologize. I was um, remiss not mentioning that clearly. No, clearly you were laying the groundwork for teachers to be able to do a lot of this. So thank you.
Also, a tip of the hat to Beth and um, members of the uh, DSAID committee, which is our uh, diversity, equity, inclusion group. Uh, that has, uh, there have been a number of people working behind the scenes that most people do not know, working behind the scenes to make sure that the Martin Luther King Day celebration and Black History Month are meaningful and that we don't just wait for those holidays to uh, teach these uh, important topics and um, uh, expose our students to amazing uh, African-American uh, scientists and writers and artists. There's so much to be tapped into and we've had some healthy conversations uh, through that uh, task force, which, sorry, is the wrong name for it because we don't see it ever going away. Uh, but I'll talk about that more next week. But uh, Beth deserves a ton of credit because I I see the correspondence going on uh, to keep that topic alive and at the forefront of our thinking. And that's where you make the difference. So thank you for that, Beth.
Thank you. I'll go to Ben Happy tonight, even if I don't win Powerball.
But will we ever see you again if you do? Um, any other comments folks wanted to make on the reports, um, other issues? Okay. Um, all right. We are just um, collecting items and things that we need to discuss for the February second is the next time that we'll meet as just a regional school committee. Um, are there things that members want to make sure is on the agenda? Um, so that we can, you know, we have our things that we will normally have on the agenda, which I do not have in front of me right now. But um, but if anything comes to mind, you may speak up now or you may reach out to me directly um, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Um, one thing just for me that I am very, um, uh, you know, I I I I know nobody knows, but I'm hopeful that by the time that we meet again in February, that we'll have some um, a little more transparency into dates by which faculty members would be able to receive a vaccine. I think just listening to our teachers speak tonight, um, you know, I hear in their voice, I hear anxiety um, around you know, rates coming up and and, you know, the challenges of of keeping the kids in school in person, which, you know, I I think as a parent of a school child right now, it's really important to me that we try and do that. Um, and hopefully we'll have um, more transparency or maybe be going with a surveillance program of some sort by next month. Um, but I understand maybe we can talk about that next week when we meet in the joint. Um, and that would be great. Really, really good. Um, anything else? On folks' minds? All right. Well, with that, it is seven thirty-nine, one hour and nine minutes. I'm so proud of us. Um, for anyone watching, we have a big week ahead. Um, we will be returning here to your screens tomorrow evening and Thursday evening at six P M in a joint session to um, interview candidates for the superintendent position. Um, and while we'd be very sad to to um, to see moving on, you know, it's always changes bad. And so I will be sad to not see, you know, Andrew here in hopefully not in a Zoom screen, but sitting at a desk in real life. Um, but I'm excited to see who might be coming to visit us and to learn more about these candidates who are interested in working with us. And um, that's really exciting. So please do join us again tomorrow um, and the and Thursday. Um, and that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Great. Um, I feel like for that one, we can do unanimous consent. If you could just take yourself off mute. Say aye. Anyone object? Great. With that, we are adjourned. All the people nodded. Let the record show. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.